Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting to order. And will you all stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance with me?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I'm looking for Cheryl. Did you roll call? No Cheryl.
She was there.
Yeah.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to excuse Cheryl.
That's good, that's good.
I'm not sure where Cheryl is, but I can get that for the record if you want. So Councilmember Kelly?
Here.
Councilmember Dunley?
Here.
Councilmember Deon?
Present.
Councilmember Kinzer?
Present.
Councilmember Cornigay is at a Mamma Mia dress rehearsal tonight, so she's not here. Councilmember Owen? Are you here?
I'm new.
Okay, good. And Councilmember Couch?
Here.
All right. Madam Mayor, I'd like to move to excuse Councilmember Cornigay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
I would also like to wish Councilmember Cornigay a happy birthday. It's her 50th birthday today.
Wow. Happy birthday, Jermaine. Okay. I am now looking for approval of the agenda.
No.
Madam Mayor, I move to approve the agenda.
Do you have a second? I have a motion by Councilwoman Couch, seconded by Councilwoman Owen. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Carries. Consent agenda. We have a motion.
Madam Mayor, move.
Is that the consent agenda?
Second.
Okay. Who's seconding? Okay, thank you. So I have a motion by Councilwoman Dunley, seconded by Councilwoman Couch. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. We have a very special event happening tonight, and that is the accommodations of some officers who have done some really amazing things. I love this time. We only seem to do this once a year, and I love this time of year because we have a chance to acknowledge those individuals who really do put their lives out there for the rest of us. And so with no further ado, I mean, I am going to move forward, and we're going to make this happen, and I will have Sergeant Jason Harris come forward, please. So I'm just going to start from the top, if that's okay. All right. So on June 18th of 2018, Sejowoli Police Sergeant Jason Harris responded to the report of a Priority One motor vehicle collision just outside of the city of Sejowoli. This incident is documented under the case of 18-w03838. Sergeant Harris arrived to find an unconscious passenger entrapped inside the vehicle and the vehicle on fire. Sergeant Harris used his fire extinguisher to keep the fire away from the patient until the Sejowoli Fire Department took over. While protecting the unconscious patient, Sergeant Harris was within only a few feet of the burning vehicle. Sergeant Harris then remained on the scene to direct incoming units. Sergeant Jason Harris acted with extraordinary heroism while conscious of imminent danger for his own personal safety. The Sejowoli Police Accommodation Committee requests that Sergeant Jason Harris receive the Distinguished Service Medal for his actions taken in this incident. Respectfully submitted, Sergeant Eaton.
Thank you. I think...
Do you want a picture? Did you want a picture of the two of them? And now may I have Officer Zachary Carroll come forward. So on March 11th of 2018, Sejowoli detectives, James Hanawalt, who is not here tonight, and Officer Zachary Carroll responded to weapons offense located in the parking lot of United General Hospital Emergency Room. Officers were advised that a male was seated in his vehicle directly in front of the ER with a gun in his hand. The male was found to be despondent and suicidal. The incident was documented under the case number 18-w01502. Detective Hanawalt and Officer Carroll moved hospital staff away from the vehicle for safety. Officer Carroll verbally attempted to de-scale the male, who was visibly emotional. Detective Hanawalt further moved staff to a safer and secure area. Further resources were called to assist, including the Skagit County Crisis Negotiation Team, officers from the Mount Vernon Police Department, officers from the Burlington Police Department, deputies from the Skagit County Sheriff's Department. Both Sejowoli officers remained on scene until the male surrendered and was taken to the hospital to receive treatment. Detective Hanawalt and Officer Carroll both acted with extraordinary heroism while conscious of imminent danger to their own personal safety. The Sejowoli Police Accommodation Committee requests that Detective James Hanawalt and Officer Zachary Carroll receive the Distinguished Service Medal for their actions taken in this incident. Respectfully submitted, Sergeant Paul Eaton.
Congratulations.
All right. Officer Austin McCoons. On August 12th of 2018, Sejowoli Officer Austin McCoons responded to a theft complaint in the city of Sejowoli. Officers located the suspect, and he was taken into custody after a foot pursuit. The suspect continued to act erratically and would not identify himself to officers. Officer McCoons transported the suspect to the police department where he was placed into a holding cell. A short time later, Officer McCoons could hear a strange sound coming from the holding cell. He walked to the area to investigate. Officer McCoons spoke to the male about what the male was doing. While speaking with the male, the subject became less intelligible. Officer McCoons could now see the male was attempting to strangle himself with a gray string. Officer McCoons entered the holding cell and cut the string away from the male's neck. The string had been placed in a way that is used for the male's body, his body weight, to strangle him in an attempt to commit suicide. Officer McCoons then took control of the male and called for aid. Officer McCoons stayed in the room with the male even as he continued to act and talk erratically. The male was later seen by medical staff at the hospital and transported to jail. Officer Austin McCoons took action, which saved another life. The Sejowoli Police Accommodation Committee requests that Officer Austin McCoons receive the Lifesaver Award for his actions taken in this incident. Respectfully submitted by Sergeant Paul Eaton.
Thank you, thank you.
Officer Karrick Holmberg. On September 28th of 2018, Officer Karrick Holmberg was on patrol in the city of Sejowoli. Officer Holmberg was stopped in his vehicle and was approached by a pickup. A female exited the vehicle and ran to Officer Holmberg. The female was able to communicate that she was having an allergic reaction and that her airway was closing. Officer Holmberg summoned via radio aid, and the female began to panic as they waited for aid. Officer Holmberg worked to breathe with the female in an attempt to slow her breathing and to slow the reaction. Aid arrived and administered treatment. The female was later transported to the hospital. Officer Holmberg further assisted in securing the female's property. Officer Karrick Holmberg took actions, which saved another life. The Sejowoli Police Accommodation Committee requests that Officer Karrick Holmberg receive the Lifesaver Award for his actions taken in this incident. Respectfully submitted by Sergeant Paul Eaton. Now actually, Officer Holmberg, I should have just had you stay up here. I have another award that I'm going to give you and Zachary Carroll. Officer Carroll? Oh, and Officer Low. My apologies. Is Officer Low here tonight? Okay. So on July 31st of 2018, Sejowoli Officer Karrick Holmberg, Officer Zachary Carroll, and Officer Derek Low responded to a report of a welfare check in the city of Sejowoli. Officers were advised that the call was made to a Skagit 911 with someone quietly saying, "Help me," with no further voice contact made or heard on the open line. Initially, Skagit 911 was unable to establish a location of the call, but gave some range of an area inside the city limits of Sejowoli. Skagit 911 was able to identify the female caller. Officers checked the area of an apartment complex inside the probable area. Officers were able to locate the female's residence. Officers forced entry into the apartment, saw blood throughout the apartment. Officers located the female on her bed actively bleeding from serious self-inflicted wounds. Officers provided aid to the female, and she was later transported to the hospital. Officer Karrick Holmberg, Officer Zachary Carroll, and Officer Derek Low took actions which saved the life of another. The Sejowoli Police Accommodation Committee requests that Officer Karrick Holmberg, Officer Zachary Carroll, and Officer Derek Low receive the Lifesaver Award for their actions taken in this incident. Respectfully submitted by Sergeant Paul Eaton.
Thank you. Again.
So, again, can we give them a round of applause for all that they do? All right. So now we're going to move on with our agenda, and we have with us tonight SCAT Director Dale O'Brien. And Dale, are you going to be a part of this as well? Dale Windler?
Brad.
Brad, I'm sorry, Brad. Okay, so please come forward.
Well, thank you, Mayor, for the invite and the councils. We put a white sheet in front of you. This is just kind of a review of what's going on with Skagit Transit as far as how many vehicles we operate, how many employees we have, the fast growth that we've experienced in the last few years. But what I wanted to do is just touch on some priorities that we came up with our Board of Directors for 2019. Skagit Transit is going to move to an electronic fare collection. Our current fare collection outfit is not supporting what we do. People will be able to load their smartphone, get on the bus, show that they have a valid ticket, and they could approach and load on the bus. It will build in efficiencies on how people load, how quick the routes stand on time, and it will reduce our cost of what we're having to pay for our current fare collection. The other major thing that's going to happen with Skagit Transit is we are starting public meetings to put fare boxes on our paratransit units. We have been fare-free on paratransit ever since we took paratransit over 1995. It's time for us to gain that revenue from the paratransit. By ADA federal law, we can charge twice the fare of a fixed route. So that will be something that will be taken in public meetings throughout our service area, yes?
What is paratransit?
Dileride.
Okay.
That is the curb-to-curb service that we have. So we will be doing public meetings throughout the county, throughout our service area to get input before we take it to the board and get approval to put fare boxes on paratransit units. The other thing we're going to do is during these public meetings is talk to the general public about fare increases on fixed route. With the change, we felt it would be best for all of our riders to have the change all at once, and we would be able to increase our revenue off of the fixed route. I'm not sure if everybody knows, but the only funding that Skagit Transit gets is four-tenths of one percent of a sales tax and the federal and state grants that we operate on. We get about $12.3 million a year on sales tax. We have a $15.7 million budget, so you can see the rest of our budget is dependent on grants. Grants all have sunsets, so at some point in time, those grants are going to go away. So by state law, a transit agency can collect up to nine tenths. We have not proposed to the board to go to an increase, but it's something that we're going to have conversations about. The other thing that we are doing right now, we have a very large capital project that we're working on. We are currently in a building that we built in 1998. We are absolutely splitting at the seams. We have so many employees now they have to park out on County Shop Lane to come to work, and it's getting so crowded. So what we did in 2015 is we purchased the old FedEx building up at the port.
I have to point this way? Is that right?
There we go. This is what the building currently looks like. As I said, we purchased this in 2015. That's the east side of the building. That, too, is the east side. As you can see, FedEx used to have 90 trucks per night in this building, so we felt that we had a consultant engineer come in and say, "Can we retrofit this to be a transit facility?" And they said, "Yeah, the building's in good shape." This is the south side. You can see all the freight doors. This is the north side, and this is, again, the east. We currently have a consultant. We are in the final design of the building. We are getting ready to get the construction documents finalized. We do not have the funds to retrofit this building, but if we have the documents on the shelf, shuttle-ready, we'll have a whole lot better chance of getting a federal grant to do this. So this is what the new entrance of the building will look like. This is the layout. You can see this square right here. We purchased this after the fact of purchasing the building itself. You can see that we have the maintenance. We have a fuel wash right here for our buses. They'll be washed every night. We have a training area to train our drivers. We're required to refresh our driver training every year. We have all of our coaches, our fixed route coaches, would park here. Paratransit units, the dileride units, would park here. This would be all staff. This is the entrance into the building, and you can see the area that will be the admin. This area will all be maintenance. Here's the public. We will also have a public meeting room in this facility. Totally, it's a 10-acre partial. It will take this agency 25 years into the future. This is another floor plan of the inside of the building. I must say that our architect did a fantastic job. We call this Main Street. Employees come in, we have the area for the drivers, and as you can see, admin, IT, operations is all in, and then maintenance. We can actually double stack our buses in maintenance. We can come in, and this is another area that we can maintain our buses. This is the east side of the building. This wall opens up. This is the driver's room. There's a kitchen and a place for the drivers to eat. This is kind of a private place when the weather is nice, that the drivers can go out and sit down and relax in between shifts. This is the northeast part. This is dispatch. Down in here is the entrances. This facility, by Homeland Security regulation, we have to have it completely secure and fenced. This is our dispatch office. They have visual to be able to see the gate, and they will operate the gate for any deliveries or things of that nature. Our buses will obviously have the electronic deal that will open the gate itself. This is the south end of the building where... Have to point at you, Doug. Okay, back one. This is the north end of the building. This is where the maintenance buses, the buses will go in for maintenance. And light up here, you see these windows? This building is designed to bring natural light in, so because it's such a big building, it's always been dark without the windows, but we'll be able to bring in natural light to help on the cost. This here is the employee parking. Again, you can see all the natural light coming through these windows. This is the employee entrance into what we call Main Street. You see a number of $31 million there? Our federal grant request is $25 million, so we are going to reduce this. We have come up with ways that we'll be able to reduce this, but we want to make sure that we have everything ready to go to turn in in June, and then we'll hear in December if we get what's called the Build Grant. It's a federal grant that we compete nationwide for. And then again, that's the main entrance into the facility. So this has been quite a project. I got to say that the consultant that we've been working with has broken all of our staff into teams, and it's not just myself or the management that has designed this building. It's been our entire staff. But with that, I'd like to ask, Brad Windler is our planning supervisor, and he recently did a public survey, and I'd like him to share his findings of what the service level for Sejowoli will look like.
Thank you, sir. So in 2018, we conducted a strategic planning process, which produced a strategic plan that was approved by the Board of Directors last year. In that, there were a number of improvements that in the public phase were discussed as possibilities for the Sejowoli and surrounding areas that did make it into the final plan and onto our priority list. So the first thing we did, though, is we wanted to establish a baseline for where we were. We went out, we asked riders how we're doing. We got over 95% of our respondents said our drivers provide safe and courteous service, and 328 out of 337 respondents were satisfied with Skagit Transit service. And then we asked them, we gave them a list of about 13, 14 options, and asked our riders, "What do you think are the most important service improvements that we should have?" And those are the top six. Some of them were a little surprising. The second most requested service improvement was more bus shelters and seating. So when you see me coming before the city asking for permits to put out bus shelters and you see them coming in on your streets, that's not random chance. That actually is driven by our public feedback. Some of the possible urban area improvements that we discussed in last year's plan that made it into our strategic plan, right now, Sejowoli is serviced by two routes, the 300 and the 305. Primarily, the 305 runs from the Park and Ride down to Skagit Valley College, but the 300 does the bulk of our ridership in the Sejowoli area, and it runs, it makes a big loop here in town, and then it goes down into Burlington and goes to our Chuckanut Park and Ride. And what we had suggested doing was splitting the Route 300 into two parts, so that Sejowoli would have a dedicated bus that would take folks around town. Right now, the 300 has a big layover out at Job Corps, and if you're on the south side and you want to get to the north side, you have to be a little strategic about when and where you catch the bus, because you could end up riding all the way into Burlington and back again in order to get to your destination, and that's an awfully long trip. So we can provide a lot better service out here in Sejowoli by having a bus that's dedicated. And also, there's some minor changes with this route that are important, that the map looks very similar to our current Sejowoli route, but the senior center is covered under this route with hourly service and also the alternative high school. And this route would also service the new library as that comes in. We also go out further west than the 300 currently does, out to Trail Road to service those apartment complexes that are out there right now are getting infrequent service at best. And so we felt that those were some examples of improvements that we could have. We also come around more on Highway 20 and come down Murdoch on this side over here, because currently, this portion of Sejowoli does not get a lot of fixed route service, and we felt that there are destinations and there are folks that would be able to be within range of our bus, and they may be able to take advantage of it. Another improvement that we have is then the other part of the current 300 becomes a separate route, and there would be a change in that routing. It would still come to the Park and Ride, so for Sejowoli residents who want to go to United General Health, they can still go and ride our service and get to the hospital. They can also get down into Burlington and our Chuckanut Park and Ride. And this would also be on hourly frequency. Additionally, we have proposed a new route. So for those who have friends or family or who may have ridden our bus ourselves, if you are riding from Sejowoli and you want to get to Skagit Station in Mount Vernon to, say, catch Amtrak, Greyhound, or maybe our services down to Everett, right now, that can be an hour and 15, hour and 30-minute trip. It's a very long trip. So what we would like to do here is offer a limited-stop service that would be an express connection. It would only have three stops. It would be the Sejowoli Park and Ride, Chuckanut Park and Ride, and Skagit Station, and it would take about 21 minutes in each direction, and then there would be a short layover on each end.
When are you thinking about that? Would start in the day?
So this is on our priority list for funding. So as Mr. O'Brien pointed out, we're currently kind of at max. So this is one of the things that a lot of the times, these kind of routes start with grant funding, so depending on what we can do, the next grant funding cycle we have to apply for is next summer.
My question was, if successful, what time in the morning would this route begin?
Oh, a time in the morning? That's really for us to determine. We would have a bus set aside for this, and we could, you know, scale this up as demand needs. I actually think that this route would be very popular, and so I think that, you know, you could run this on an hourly basis.
Do you think this would be a commuting time schedule, or do you think this would go throughout the day on an hourly basis?
It depends on our funding. I mean, in a perfect world, we would like to do this on an hourly basis all day, and we would like to start this at 6:00 in the morning with the rest of our service, so that could enable somebody to get down and start catching buses at 6:30 out of Chuckanut or out of Skagit Station to go southbound if they wanted to go into the Seattle region. So you can catch a 6:30 bus that puts you down in Everett at 42 minutes later, so you could be in Everett at 7:15, 7:20, so somebody could...
Right now, the earliest you can get to Everett Station by bus, because I do this, 6:30 in the morning from the Walgoons by taking the 300, then the express to Everett, and then the 512 to Seattle, New Mountain, Seattle, depending on traffic, earliest this around 9:30. Thank you.
Yeah. So this would be... So, this would be, we recognize the need. So, um, and I, I think that's the end of my slides. So, these are three big improvements. We are working on a number of other improvements that are to our infrastructure. I've made the mayor aware that we have engineering consultants on board. We're looking at doing a bus pullout at the new food bank on Fruitdale. What we would like to do is construct a bus pullout so that, and when our Route 300 goes by there, it can pull completely off the road so that as passengers need a little additional time to load on all of their goods, we're not blocking the roadway. We can be out of the way and then continue on. The other thing that we need to do is we need to construct a bathroom facility for our drivers at the Park and Ride. That is also something that I'm working with the staff on over in Public Works. And with that, we yield to your questions.
Any questions?
I have several.
Okay.
All right. So, as a frequent user of the Skagit Transit, it is my number one modality. I, you said that you received 337 respondents, responses to your survey. How many people, how many riders do you have a year, like let's say 2018?
Uh, this last year, we carried about 724,000 riders on an annual basis. On a daily basis, our ridership for weekday is about 2,500. We got 360 respondents in total. Now, not everybody answers every questions, but that is enough to make us, make our survey statistically valid if you are into the statistics world. We meet that 95% threshold.
And which routes? You said there were two routes that serve Cedar Woolley and I had questions on that because I can think about four.
Well, yeah, there's two that provide connections to the Mount Vernon area.
Ah, okay.
So, it's the 300 that goes into Burlington and Chuckanut, the 305 that comes out and goes to Skagit, or goes down to Skagit Valley College. We do have two that go east from here for those who are interested in that. That's the 717 that operates Monday through Saturday and it goes all the way to concrete. And then on Tuesdays, our Route 750 runs all the way to Marble Mountain.
750 still going to be a pilot program then? You're thinking about the ridership density on that and frequency?
Yes.
Okay.
We did do an improvement to that. There's now two round trips on that and we moved it from Friday to Tuesdays because concrete has social services on Tuesdays as well as doctors.
Excellent, because also the food bank provides services for those folks as well upriver. So, the 717, I've taken early in the morning to get to, what's that, 6:25 a.m. into Mount Vernon as well. So, I would suggest for consideration, 717 is something that we use. And so, 337 respondents to a survey of 724,000 people that use it a year and that's statistically appropriate.
It's, well, it's based on your, on your average weekday usage. So, we have about 2,500 on a weekday.
Got that.
One person can account for thousands of trips in a given year.
Okay. All right. And so, our circulator, which is what the 300 will become, right? And so, we're kind of reducing that one seat trip from Cedar Woolley to outside of Cedar Woolley? Is that fair to say?
Yes, you would need a transfer then at the Park and Ride.
Okay, fantastic. And then I had a question about the paratransit because what do you need to do in order to be qualified to, to use paratransit right now?
Okay, so you call our customer service line and we will send out an application that folks fill out. So, what we're obligated to do under federal law is provide complimentary paratransit for those citizens who live within 3/4 of a mile of our fixed route service but are not able to use our fixed route service because of a disability issue.
Okay, so they're disabled?
Yes.
Okay.
And so, then they send that in, listing what their disability is. We evaluate their functional ability and then we let them know if they qualify.
And that's a free service? It's been a free service for a long period of time and you're thinking of changing that?
Yes. Because...
I understand that part. I'm getting to the point that these people are disabled and you're thinking about charging them and they haven't been charged in the past.
Correct.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure I heard them right. Thank you for coming tonight. Thanks for answering my questions. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Okay, anyone else? So, Brad and Dale, thank you again. Greatly appreciate all that you do and I always enjoy the SCAP meetings, the things that you have developing. And a special thanks for considering the changes that are happening here in Cedar Woolley and accommodating that, you know, for example, the library that's going to be happening. So, I, as the mayor and as city council, we thank you for all you do. All right. So, as you could probably see, the library was going to give us an update, but Jean Williams needed rescheduled, so we'll be hearing from her in the future. So, let's move on to staff reports. Chief Tucker.
Just one incident to report on from over the weekend. Somebody may have heard or seen some of the damage from a stolen vehicle that came roaring into town over the weekend. We had a vehicle stolen in Big Lake and they committed all sorts of hate and discontent mayhem in Big Lake, went to Clear Lake, did the same, and then zoomed into town and apparently went straight through the roundabout with all those boulders at Highway 9 and Jamison. I know when I came through on the weekend, I was a little curious as to why there was a boulder too big, too big to shove back into the roundabout. It was probably, I don't know, that big, sitting out on the concrete apron. Eventually, the vehicle came in and smashed and did quite a bit of damage to the curb right straight through at Highway 9 and Highway 20. And at some point, we're not exactly sure where, the subject intentionally cut off one of his ears. Yeah. This is the norm for us. So, this is just weird as our kind of normal. He prowled some cars in the Food Village parking lot and then took off out Cook Road. I think a deputy found him while we were trying to figure out what exactly we had going on. We found a wrecked vehicle and that vehicle, I don't even think it was reported stolen at the time, but they did find out pretty quick that it was stolen. The subject was taken to the hospital and they kept him. Apparently, he had some issues. I don't know if he had all of the issues, but he had most of the issues. But when he, apparently whenever the deputy found him, he had a hoodie on, he had earmuffs on, he had one of those little head things to put over your ears, just a little bandana head wrap thing. So, you take off your hoodie, yeah, can you take off your earmuffs? And there's blood running down his head. And we're not exactly sure why all of this happened, just because. But apparently, he is still being seen to by the appropriate authorities and he faces several felony charges once he gets turned loose from the medical facilities. Other than that, I can't really beat that. I'm going to stick with that.
Mayor, I've got a question.
Yes.
So, on East State Street, I was getting some contact about East State Street being closed, let's say between 11th and Railroad because of some activity out of the county that came into the city and involved a weapon. I hear all the officers and deputies are safe and the subject was taken into custody.
Was that the pursuit over the weekend? Because that was another, that was another crazy pursuit that ran through, but it kind of passed through here and there was a spike stripping of a vehicle and all that and yeah, everything turned out fine with that. Nobody was hurt. Just some feelings.
Thanks so much. It was good to see everyone awarded today. Thank you.
We're trying to steer clear of that because that was a state patrol thing and we're like, yeah, I don't think we want to get involved in that.
All right, thank you. Assistant Chief Wagner.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, in the fire realm, right now, we have had some openings over the last couple of months in our residents' quarters. We are happy to announce that one of our inside volunteers has stepped up and is moving into Station 2, filling our void up there. We also have a new prospect by the name of Sierra Stowe, one of our local Skagit Valley College recruits over here at the fire training program is going to be moving in April 8th down here to Station 1. That puts us almost at full capacity and a little over what we had last year with our extra rooms we built up at Station 2. Our current eight paramedics that we hire that are in the initial firefighter proficiency training, seven out of the eight are now signed off and starting their probation for their year. The eighth will probably be signed off here the next couple of weeks if all goes well. Call volume is extremely high over what we've been used to in the past with bringing on the new paramedic program. Last year, for the entire year, we did about 450 transports to the hospital with our BLS program. We're currently over 340 as of today. We have 715 calls already this year and on pace to break over 3,000. So, very busy in the fire department with training and call volume, but it's working very well. We, if you look on the screen that shows how many units are available in the county, we went from having four in the Central Valley area to sometimes we have 11 or 12, which has been a great effect upon our response times here in Cedar Woolley and with sometimes having three of our own right here locally and providing that service to the citizens of Cedar Woolley in the secondary area around District 8 and Hamilton and to the north. This morning, we had a pretty serious collision out here on Cook Road and in the meantime, we also had two ambulances, one on a very serious accident out in Bow and another one of our ambulances was in Friday Creek up in Algeria. So, it's a great addition to the county and we're all benefiting from it.
Mayor, can I add one more thing here?
Yes.
If the council has any questions for Frank.
Oh, I was just going to make a comment because I came out with my dogs, right? As that accident happened, my first comment was, that couldn't have been 35 miles an hour.
It was a pretty good impact.
Yeah, 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 yeah. But no, what I was actually going to comment on was the ambulance driver because I was coming back as they took off and I noticed they flipped on the siren and turned it off instantly as myself and my dogs went past and then after they got past us, they turned it back on. And I thought that was really considerate.
We try to have courteous employees as well, so I'll pass that on to them.
Yeah.
They can be kind of overwhelming, some of those new sirens.
All right, Chief Tucker.
Yeah, I just wanted to add, for those that didn't know, we have Veterans Day, or Veterans Parade going on on Saturday at 1:00, starting right down there around Lemley's is usually where we get it kicked off and then goes around and marches over to the Legion. So, it's not very, it doesn't take very long, but we're going to be out supporting that and leading the parade with the flag saluting or the flag carrying crew.
And that's for the Vietnam Vet.
Right, Vietnam Vet's Parade, I'm sorry, yes.
Actually, the commemorative day, I think it's actually Friday on the 29th. That's the official day. There'll also be a 2 o'clock program at the Legion if you want to participate in that or come see that. Yeah, thank you for mentioning that. And I just want to make a comment actually to you, Frank, in that, gosh, getting to this point, there was a lot of work, there were a lot of meetings, it took a lot of compromise. There was organization, there was building going on, there was funding going on, there were so many wheels that were in motion and yet you built a program beautifully. And in speaking with some of the paramedics, all I hear are positive comments. They're happy to be here, they love the program, they like being at Cedar Woolley, they love the program that you have here. I think that really says a lot about what you have going on here, so.
And I think that's a testament to the small town community and the teamwork that went in from really every single department in this city stepped up to make this happen in a, in a time period where a lot of people were naysayers and said it couldn't happen. And we had, you know, Nathan and Kevin and Doug and his crew and Aaron. I mean, it was sometimes three, four, five meetings a day on some of those days in 16, 18 hour days to make it happen, but everybody came together. I mean, we had wastewater and sewer treatment people out here putting lines in and building and it's phenomenal what a small town community can come together and make happen.
All right. Anyway, thank you. Mr. Burke?
I put on your days tonight some visualizations of the library. You know, we're getting close on that project. We've got 95% planned sets now. We're going to add on April 15th, we'll be opening bids on May 10th and we're anticipating notice to proceed in early June. In fact, if you would save the date of, if I can get to the right spot here, June, June 5th, Wednesday, June 5th in the afternoon is the tentative date for the groundbreaking ceremony for the new library project.
What time?
Well, that's to be determined at this point. I think we're sort of holding afternoon, 2 o'clock-ish.
That's after the change of...
Perfect. Perfect. See, we thought about that.
Glad to be here.
So, I also emailed you a link to a visualization of the interior and it's, it's one where you can, if you're looking at it on an iPad, you can hold up your iPad and look at it around the room or if you're on a computer, you can use your mouse to kind of look around in a 360 viewpoint. So, if you have any questions about where we're headed on the design front, let me know. Council will have a couple of different action points coming up and Doug can talk about that piece that's specifically related to the debt financing. It's going to be a city action and so there will be two or three meetings where you'll have some items to get moving on that consistent with our agreement. There's no surprises there. Everything's coming in as we anticipated, pretty darn close to the Q and A from 2016 or whatever that was at this point. It's pretty exciting to see that coming together. In other news, somewhat library related, both the House and Senate have released their budgets this week. So, our library has, has a million dollars of funding in the House budget, has half a million dollars of funding in the Senate budget. So, I guess we're optimistic that our final answer will be somewhere between 500,000 and a million dollars. The Hauser Project is funded in the House budget at the requested level of like 297,000. It is not in the Senate budget. And in the House transportation budget, we have half a million dollars to continue the design phase work of our undercrossing on the Jones-Johnliner project. There's nothing in the Senate transportation budget. Of course, we continue to be in the Senate transportation package for 30.6 million dollars. So, stay tuned on that front. Clearly, our legislators were busy and we're thinking about Cedar Woolley this year. Lot of projects in the district, in the 39th. The Skagit County has $7 million in the House budget and 6.6 million in the Senate budget for the new evaluation and treatment center, their new behavioral health campus, kind of step one out at SR 20. So, we're expecting that that project will continue this year with the installation of the new access and center turn lanes on SR 20 and that the county will fairly quickly begin the process of applying for their permits under the essential public facilities process. So, stay tuned there. And of course, what is this, the end of March? So, we're about a month away now at this point from signee die and the conclusion of the legislative session. So, more reports to follow on that front. Otherwise, I think things are pretty normal at City Hall. There's just a lot going on these days. Seems like it was January and now it's almost April. So, we're just keeping up with lots of projects. Let's say I walked around a bit downtown again today. There is just so much excitement in Cedar Woolley right now. Buildings are being purchased, there's more investment and interest coming into town. You know, even, even with the loss of the Ford Garage, I'm finding a hard time not being really optimistic about what's coming next. It just seems like everybody I'm talking to is... I talked to a guy last week who was trying to buy a building in town and his comment to me was, I gotta get my foot in the door here because I'm concerned I won't have a chance if I don't do it now. You know, and this is a Metcalf storefront that he's looking for in particular. You know, the same street where a few years ago during the recession, seemed like there were bargains everywhere you looked and now, you know, just in the last few months, we've seen, you know, at least four major acquisition and transfers. And these transfers are exciting to me. You know, the one in particular I'm thinking of is, you know, that whole block between Ferry and Woodworth with the exception of the dental building and the Iron Mountain was owned by, what I think of as an absentee owner. That is now owned by local, local owners who, you know, I think will be wonderful because they're going to be driving by their buildings every day. You know, and that's where you get that energy and enthusiasm and excitement and pride of ownership and to see that, you know, that group of people saying, Cedar Woolley's where I want to put my money, where I want to stake my future. to put my money, where I want to stake my future," is pretty exciting. So, it's not just the springtime weather, there's more going on in town. And I think it's good news, so that's all I've got tonight. Thanks.
Thank you. Doug?
I have a couple of items. The first is, we've spoken a little bit in the past about two of our policies we've been working on. One is our debt policy, the other is our investment policy. And we had submitted both of those to the state, to the Treasurers Office, to have them run it through their review board, and they will certify cities' policies in those two areas. And over this last week and a half or so, both our policies were reviewed, and I got phone calls on both of them that they've certified those. And so, they'll be sending something to the city here acknowledging that. So, that was really good, a good first step to getting some of our things out there and knowing that they're working at the level they should be. It's good timing, because my next item is the debt issuance on the library. We're moving forward with that. We had a phone conference yesterday with Pacifica Law Group, our bond attorneys, and with Public Financial Management, we call them PFM. They're our financial advisors. So, we're working on getting a bond issue set up and moving forward with that process. So, what you will see as council members are a couple of different things. We'll have what we call a preliminary offering statement. A lot of times, you'll hear it called a prospectus, and it's a big packet that talks about the city, our finances, and what we're going to be doing with the bond issue. The next that'll be coming up soon is a bond ordinance. And we'll be doing probably a first reading, maybe the first meeting in April. And that will get us on track to actually doing a bond issue sometime in May. Rates right now have actually been settling back a little bit. They were going up. The Fed has softened or just shown a little less interest in raising rates. So, that's been reflected in the market. So, it's a good time right now. If we're going to issue, this is probably the time to do it. So, I think timing is in our favor. Hopefully, we'll have everything wrapped up and the funding in place before the end of May, which then dovetails into the award of the bid and groundbreaking, you know, following in June. So, I think everything's lining up fine, and we'll have all the funding and everything in places we need it. The last item I have is looking at our investments. We invest all of our excess money in the local government investment pool. It's called the LGIP. Right now, it's running about 2.5%, which is about 2.5% higher than it was a couple of years ago. So, rates have come up some, but there are some ways we can still do better. Some of our money that we're holding is for things where we're setting aside money for vehicle purchases, maybe five to 10 years from now. So, we have money that we're accumulating and sitting there. It is in the LGIP, but we could do a little bit better on the interest earnings on it. The LGIP has a one-day turnaround, so the maturity or the liquidity on it is very short. So, usually, you don't get as high a rate for that kind of money. But if we were to invest at, say, in AAA or government agencies like that, we could probably be earning a half a percent to 3/4% higher. If you multiply that to about that $4 million balance and excess funds we have, that would bring us in about an extra $22,000 to $25,000 a year just in investment earnings. So, I'm going to be moving forward and looking at some of that information. I've talked to a couple of investment firms already, and I'll have their information and stuff for you to talk about that. But we'll probably have a couple of agreements come forward to you to take a look at and approve that, so we can make that money work a little better for us.
Any questions? That's great news. Thank you. Actually, I appreciate the way you're looking to make us more money.
Yeah.
Save money and make money. I like that. Good, thank you. All right, Jared?
Madam Mayor, I just have one quick thing. I'd like to ask the council and the community to keep the family of Deputy Ryan Thompson, who was murdered in Kitataas County in the line of duty. He'll be laid to rest tomorrow in central Washington. And also, keep Officer Benito Chavez from Kitataas City Police in your thoughts and prayers as he heals and moves through this process of losing a partner. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Jared. Chuck? Okay. Carl?
Today was our first meeting as the City of Cedar Woolley at the Skagit Watershed Council. So, participated with about 40 other organizations, cities, counties, et cetera. So, didn't know what our format was going to be going forward on those reports, but just very briefly, that today was Steelhead Day. So, we talked for two hours, a presentation on Steelhead Recovery and how that difference from, differentiates from salmon recovery. And it was a very, very intellectual group. And look forward to some information so we can have a bidirectional relationship with that council. Thank you.
And thank you for volunteering to take that position for the city. Councilwoman?
Just to add to that, the reason I'm volunteering, and it directly affects Ward 6, because that's, the river does touch Ward 6 directly with the park and the boat ramp, et cetera. And there are people there that are eager to help us on making that a cultural jewel and easier access for families and others.
Thank you. Judith?
Couple of quick things. First of all, next week, our Chamber of Commerce meeting will be held at Magnolia Hall because Rotary is busy carrying up the community center. And so, rather than put the mayor in the middle of chaos, she is going to be our featured speaker, and we look forward to hearing her state-of-the-city address. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
And the other thing that I was going to bring up is, flipped my mind at the moment. Oh, I just wanted to say, I was very, very, very pleased with Kim Cobell's report on our city in the newspaper on Sunday. If you didn't see it, please go online to GoSkagit and look it up. It was an excellent article. It hit the front page and then a full page inside. And it really is kind of what Aaron was talking about with the excitement around town. There is a level of excitement here in the city, and it has a lot to do with the fact that we are growing and we have been really working hard at it. And so, I commend all of you for all your hard work on that.
Thank you, Paul. Okay, I just have a couple of things. First, we are taking applications for the Planning Commission. We have an opening in there, so if you or if you know of anyone who might be interested in being a part of that, please fill out an application. And I suppose you saw in the paper too that we are taking applications for Joanne in the Building and Permit Department. We're taking applications for her position. So, just making you aware of those things. And also, council in front of you, you have, for your information, it is a conversation that I and the Police Department and Aaron had conversation with owner of one of the bars in town. It was really positive, so much so that Lieutenant McElwath and I are going to, we have already put together a date and a meeting with the other bartenders in town, and we're going to communicate how we can convey concerns or enhance safety or both and reduce criminal activity. We want to identify areas where we can improve or where we would like to see some improvement within the bar. So, it's been a fantastic reception, and I'm very glad to see it. And I think they are too, so, which I think is why we had such a great response when we put the invite out there. And then, one last thing, talking about excitement of the city. I had a conversation with Jay Bowen. If you don't know who he is, he is an artist in this area, and he is wanting to meet with the council, so I'll be setting that up, but not until sometime in June. But he'd like to meet with the council because he would like to have conversation with us about the possibility of doing some sort of a, I don't want to say totem pole, but it's actually a sculpture that will represent the city and whatever or however that may look like, or if we even want to pursue it, that will be in our hands, and we will make that determination. But he does want to meet with us about that. But he too is very excited about what he wants to see happen, and he wants to celebrate the city by doing this sculpture for us. So, I thought that was pretty cool, yeah. So, okay, so that is it. Let's move on to public comments. It is 8:00 right now. If there is anyone who would like to make public comment, please keep it to three minutes and give your name and address. So, I'm opening it up. Anybody interested? You're talking about it there in the corner, I can see that. Anyway, so if there's no comments, then I will close public comment at 8:01. How's that?
You have another comment, but you haven't been by here.
We've got a few people.
You're all we need, Daryl.
Yep. Two, three, four.
Everybody counts, right? So, let's move on then to unfinished business. We have the Governance Handbook update. This will be Resolution 1020-19. Governance Handbook, who's going to discuss this?
Well, I can introduce it if you'd like, Mayor. So, first of all, I confess there was a typo. I'm missing a committee, a planning committee. So, John's not here, so I, you know, clearly it was my favorite committee when I was typing this up and working on this project with the mayor. So, that's missing, needs to be added. This really came out of a request from the mayor to try to reinvigorate the council committees, and then, of course, from the council and your conversations at the recent retreat. So, the purpose of this document, which is drafted as an amendment to the Governance Handbook, is to kind of put some detail around the committees, to specifically define the committees, identify when they meet, how they meet, how they're staffed. And, you know, that's really, that's really it detail-wise, so be glad to answer any questions. And of course, the goal tonight is to get some direction with the idea that this is draft one, and a future draft would come at your next meeting.
So, these are amendments, they're not strikers, they're to be added?
Yeah. So...
So, I'm looking at page 5 of our City Council Governance Handbook, last updated March 15, 2018. So, we would be just taking this document here, where it says, "A, Election of Officers, Selection of Operations of Council Committees." That'd be a new title heading, if I'm reading that correctly. Placing general?
Close, because A1 already exists with the, you know, procedure for electing officers by any, at the first meeting, that's current language. So, really, it's, A2 is new language, so A2 and beyond.
Okay, so, my background is I would see something with strikeout and underlined language. So, I'm just trying to figure out how this goes into this.
Right. So, there, I don't have that document in front of me, but from my memory, there should be no strikeout, and everything from A2 on would be underlined. Because I don't think we've got, unless you're seeing something, I don't remember that we've got committee structure identified in there. I think A1 is what's there today, right?
Right. So, it sounds like we're not going to take action on this tonight because it is missing language on Planning Committee and...
And it needs council feedback.
Correct.
But in terms of, just to, you know, answer your question most clear, so just looking at page 72 in the packet, under A2, everything after that would be underlined, and so there should be no strikeout from the current language.
All right, thanks. Does that make sense? Council feedback for me would be, I love the idea of using council committees. We have them, we should use them. I've been pleased with serving on the Utilities Committee with Paul as our chair of that. And I thought that was an effective use of our time and effective use of driving policy and understanding staff's concerns and how the world has changed. So, I think these are good things. My concerns would be if they were used in a way to delay something that needed to be done speedily, that we would have recourse to suspend, I guess, those rules if we needed to do something quickly. Does that make sense?
Yes, so...
Especially if anything that, like, for instance, we're going after a grant or something and suddenly needed...
Nothing in this proposal requires anything to go to committee.
Okay.
So, there would be no, so in other words, I mean, you're thinking of kind of legislative process where all of a sudden, prior to a council getting something, it must first be heard by committee. There's nothing in here about that. And the specific focus of this structure, I don't remember which page it's on, but the purpose is really to allow for a smaller-than-quorum group of council members to gain in-depth knowledge about a particular topic and bring back a recommendation.
Yeah, I really wanted, I really, the reason for this had to do with, it is the feedback that was given during the council session or the retreat that we had, but I wanted to give some definition and direction so that when you meet with the committees, because that was one thing that was stated, we don't really know what we're supposed to be doing. So, I wanted some direction and some encouragement so that when you go into your council meeting or into your council, your small councils, you'll know what you're doing.
I recall, because we were in attendance at that meeting. I am curious to see language that allows a public comment, or what is the engagement of public when we have committee meetings? Because right now, it's my understanding that that's not what we do.
Correct, and this was drafted with that current practice in mind. So, these committee meetings are specifically designed to have fewer than a quorum and not allow any public testimony. So, they're not meetings that would be required to be open to the public.
Nor would they be videoed or...
No minutes, no video recording, no prior notice, none of that. They are, just as they would be today if three of you got together to talk about something, no delegated authority. So, they don't take that next step, which I know you discussed at the retreat of, you know, providing another opportunity for public engagement.
Right. Okay, thank you very much. Thanks for the work on this.
You're welcome.
I guess my only question is, not to drag this out any longer than it needs to, but who decides who the staff liaison is? Is it the committee chairperson?
No, under the structure, it would be either me or the mayor. And so, they'd be subject matter folks, and that would be logical.
Right, but I guess my only question is, so I don't, let me scroll up, so Committee One, just take that for example, it would seem prudent to have the police chief and the fire chief there.
Correct.
And I would rather hear from them than, no offense, but you were the mayor, if I'm on that committee. So, that's my only, who makes that decision?
The mayor or I would make that decision. But that is the decision that would be made. So, the concept here is that the current structure is basically all the committees are staffed by me. And so, you know, this adds a layer of having department director, direct staff liaisons. And for public safety, it would be exactly that, it'd be the two chiefs. For the Utilities Committee, it would be Mark. And then, probably depending on the topic, bring in either, you know, Nathan to talk about stormwater, or Debbie to talk about sewer, or Leo to talk about solid waste. For Finance and Personnel, that would be a Doug and Aaron show, Doug on Finance and me on Personnel. Parks and Rec's a little tricky, because we don't actually have a director-level position there, so that's a Mark and Nathan show for subject matter expertise. And then, Planning, of course, would be Planning Director. That's the mystery one that's not written. And then, Business Development, that may be something that would continue to be a committee that I would staff.
And what's the purpose for having the mayor on all the committees?
Well, the mayor, of course, is the primary liaison between the council and the executive branch of government. So, as the head of the executive branch, nothing that the committees do can have any actual practical application without the mayor's engagement. So, that language is intended, and it's pretty common, you know, I borrowed this from other cities, it's just to make clear that, hey... It's just to make clear that, hey, the council's meeting, any official meeting of the council, the mayor runs. A council committee meeting, uh, the mayor doesn't have to run, uh, under state law, but the, the mayor is clearly welcome to be there and is expected to participate and engage to the extent the mayor wants to. So we're too small, I guess, uh, I would follow that up. We, we are just too small as a city to have a council that runs off without, you know, that branch of government. So if you're a Bellingham council member or a Seattle council member, you have your own staff. And then they've got legislative staff and executive staff talking. That's just not in the cards for Cedar Woolley. Uh, you know, our, our size just requires us to work together at all levels.
All directions and...
Everywhere you look. Yeah, I agree with you. So is there any feedback? I mean, is this something that you wanna see on the agenda for next time?
Yeah.
Do you want the Planning Committee? Should we just bag that? I mean, that's efficient.
(laughing)
Your, your comment is noted. You're gonna shut that with John. Play the tape at 8:11.
And recorded.
Okay. Are there any other changes that anybody would want to see in, uh, Draft 2?
I would like us to further discuss the language at our next study session.
Okay. The, uh, you're talking April 3rd?
Correct.
Sounds good.
Okay. We'll probably add that to the end of the agenda. We've got a fairly robust conversation set for that. But yeah, sure, we'll put it on, just make that the last item on the agenda, if that works for the council.
Yeah. All right.
If it's such a short thing, maybe we could put it first and get it out of the way.
I don't know if it's short. I just heard I'd like to discuss the language further. So I have, I have no expectation of timing. But I, I do know that what we've got planned, uh, out of the gate is we've got, uh, the emergency procedures, uh, you know, which I sent to you, I think, about a week ago.
That looked pretty brief.
Yeah. And we've got, uh, a couple of financial policies I think we're looking at. And I know there was something else, but I can't remember.
As General Patton said, pressure makes diamonds, so...
Hey, I'm all for it. As long as you're here, let's just get her done. So, all right. So this, as it sits, you'd like to see on the agenda for next week, it sounds like? Okay?
All right.
Or at least another draft.
You know, with planning included.
Okay. Add planning and bring that back next week. All right. Gotcha.
Okay. So moving on, new business. We don't have any scheduled, but Councilman Owen, you had something you wanted to say?
Yes, yes, I do. I'd like to address the council. I spent a little time, uh, checking with, uh, some other councils in the county, uh, per se Burlington and Mount Vernon, uh, about their salaries. And Burlington is $800 and, uh, Mount Vernon is 1,100. I didn't check with Anna Quarters, but, but I believe last year it was 1,100, so I have no idea what they're getting now. Uh, Cedar Woolley's been at $500 for a good 15 years or more, and I think it's time that, that we, uh, look at the salary, and, and the salary should be increased. So, uh, it is time, I'm gonna make a motion that Cedar Woolley's, uh, salary, council salary be raised from 500 to 900 dollars, beginning with the council person's next election. That wouldn't affect anybody until the year 2020, so, uh, I'd like to make that motion.
So now that would be in the form of an ordinance, would it not? That needs to come in the form of an ordinance?
Yeah. In order for that to be effective, uh, yeah, City Council salary is established by ordinance, so the council would need to adopt a new ordinance...
Right.
...to change the salary. So, uh, maybe a friendly suggestion would be to modify the motion to, um, you know, request an ordinance be drafted and place the item on a future agenda.
Okay.
Okay. So, um, is that the way you want your motion?
Yes, I would request an ordinance.
Okay. So a motion has been made by Owen. Is there a second?
I will.
Okay. So a motion made by Councilman Owen, seconded by Councilwoman Dan Lee. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay. And motion carries. All right. So we'll bring that forth on the April 10th, or what one, when will that be brought forth for them to...
Yeah, I, I should be able to get something together for that time period.
Okay. All right. Thank you. So, um, we do have executive session. Is there anything, any questions regarding the informational items or good of the order? If not, we'll move into executive session. It'll be only 10 minutes, or about 10 minutes. This is under RCW 42301101I, um, current or potential litigation. Action will be requested, so... Okay, we are back from executive session, and I am looking for a motion.
I move that the, uh, mayor be authorized to sign the agreement that was mentioned in the executive session.
Okay. A motion made by, uh, Councilwoman DeYoung, or Danielle Lee, sorry, sorry. And seconded by Councilman Owen. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Motion carries. So if no objection, we are adjourned.